Reporting, dot goo is reporting for personal use. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, the agenda that you have in front of you with the little R on the bottom, and if you pulled it off the website, that is the correct agenda.
Okay. And before we start public input, I'll announce that we are having an executive session after the meeting tonight for personnel issues. And going to public input, I have Jen Bush about the holiday tree lighting. That is not on here for tonight, is it Jenna?
No, I do not have one here.
Yes?
Um, I have a couple of questions, and I sent an email to both of you about the form, hoping that I could get a blessing to ask some businesses for some donations. And we are, it's taking longer than we thought to get 501(c)(3) going. So if we get donations from businesses, if we could get some type of account through the township so they can make it out to the township and go that route just for the holiday tree lighting, um, to pay for the tree and whatever else we need for the tree. Um, and also getting the tree. I have a place to get the tree, we got a decent deal, um, but if the township could pick it up and then plant it. I mean, we can get the volunteers to help, but we need the excavator or whatever it is to put it in the ground. It's going to be about 350 pounds, like a 10-foot tree.
Have you had any problems, you know, if you're...
Do we have equipment in the township to do that?
Yeah.
To move a 10-foot tree? Are you going to be advertising this strictly as tree lighting?
Tree lighting ceremony.
And that is all you're going to be raising money for through the township at this point?
Yeah, it's just for the tree lighting. It's for the tree, the lights, we're, Emmy and I, thinking we're going to have to do solar because there isn't electric. So solar lights and then, it just says it's temporary until we get electric.
Well, my concern is that you've been out advertising other things that your committee wants to do or is attempting to do. I just don't want it to look like the township is in support of those things at this point?
No, it's just the tree lighting event.
Okay.
That's it. And the reason I want to get donations is because we want to make it free to the public. We want this to be a free, low-cost, stress-free, fun, family event for the community.
Do you have any objection to...
I, I mean, if, I'm curious as what... I'm assuming you feel that it'll be easier for you to solicit funds if you're a 501(c)(3), but their donation, their donation, like if they're sending it to the township, that's not going to be, not going to accomplish the same thing, so why you're not just collecting the money?
Well, we cannot collect money, it won't be tax deductible for businesses if we're not a 501(c)(3).
I give money all the time as a business and it's not tax deductible.
And I don't think it'd be tax deductible if it's given to the township.
To give to a, no, it's non-for nonprofit.
I don't think so.
We're not a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I assumed because we're nonprofit, okay.
I just don't know that it...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there'd be much benefit, you'd be better partnering with the...
No, that was the only reason I was going to ask, so if that's the case, then we'll just hopefully make it to Campbelltown through the line, so.
Do you guys have a check, you have a way to handle that already?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to get it, that shouldn't be a big deal.
Alright.
Okay, so then, um, do you have your blessing to ask businesses, is that okay for donations?
Well, you're your own organization, so yeah, I mean...
Alrighty, and the picking up the tree and...
Where is that?
It would be, it's Blue Ridge, Tree Farms.
So local.
It's about 20-minute ride.
That's over in...
Hand over, tie the school over there.
So if it's 10 feet high, it's under 8'6" in diameter?
Yeah.
As long, as long as it'd be less than 8'6", because then it'll be an oversized load and there'd be permits involved and those kind of things, but as long as it would be less than that, I don't, I have no issue.
They said it's about 350 pounds.
Jack would know better as to what can be transported with...
Yeah, as long as it's under 8'6", that would be the, that would be the key.
Okay.
At least one dimension, it can be 10 feet high, but at least one dimension, or less than 8'6", so it doesn't hang out.
Right.
Over the sides.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Alrighty, and then do you, should I just email to set up a date or, you know, dinner or you guys?
Jenna.
Jenna, okay, alright, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Ron, I see you're, where did you go? Where's Ron? I see you're on here, but you're on the agenda, well, kind of, the topic's on the agenda.
Yeah, I'll wait for the topics.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, it looks like everything else, if you sign up here and you have a topic, it looks like it is on the agenda for tonight, so we will move on then. Can I get a motion to approve September 10th Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Call second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And also for September 25th Workshop Meeting Minutes?
Motion approved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Moving on to Bill and Payroll, 1819?
Motion approved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to 1919?
Motion approved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Jenna, do you have a report to give?
I do, I just have one small item right now, something else that I forgot to remember. I have been in correspondence with FEMA in regards to the updating of the floodplain map. They said that the appeal period ended on July 9th. Final determination for the entire map will go on on January 8th. And then the floodplain maps will actually get updated by July 8th of 2020. So just so you're aware of the timeline, I did contact FEMA. If you submitted a map of anything to me that was sent to FEMA and if there was engineering study, they did say there were two on, um, in Stonbrooke that, Stonebrooke, that were taken out because of the paperwork that the homeowner submitted, so, um, yeah. If there are any questions on that, you can contact me at the office.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Alright. Dawn, zoning and code enforcement officer, report.
15 zoning permits last month, nine building permits by perm permits, one high by occupancy permit. One main complaint, most of my complaints I was still working on for the prior month. And the one complaint that I had was for an illicit discharge which was cleaned up right away, the property owner took care of it. I'm going to have a zoning hearing on November 14th, I just received this application. The person currently has a home and an attached garage on their property, and they want to attach the garage to the home. But the setback is currently 5 feet from the property line which meets the detached garage, not if it's part of the home, so they need relief from the side yard setbacks. And that's at 1935 South Ford Road. And the planning commission is still reviewing our zoning differences. We've been doing number.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, do you have anything?
Um, I'm going to have comments on items later on the agenda, and as you said, we do have a person, I'm not going to discuss an executive session, but other than that, nothing specific. There is one thing that'll probably be coming up in the next month or so. I think it's Windermere, if I could be wrong, they're trying to close out their MPDES permit, and they need, it involves the open space that the township took over.
Carriage Park?
Carriage Park. And, um, they're asking for us to amend one of the, and sign off on one of the plans for the post, you know, construction stormwater maintenance and wiring responsibilities that are basically on the township, because it's going to be our property. I think I've sent it to R2, I think R2 has some comments on it, but that'll be coming down the pike at some point in time in the near future. That's all.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes. During the month of September, officers reported on 190 incidents, made two criminal arrests, which included one DUI arrest, issued 16 traffic citations, and 30 written warnings to motorists. Just a couple of other things, and as directed by the board, I sent a letter to PennDOT District 8, asking them to do a traffic study on mine road, to reevaluate the posted speed limit. I've not heard back from them yet. And then also, a reminder that trick-or-treat in Lebanon County is Thursday, October 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I don't have anything from Scott, did you have anything? Okay. Kendra, Palmyra Library?
Yes, the library's capital campaign entered the public phase the end of August. A brochure about the campaign along with a pledge form and naming opportunities was sent to approximately 250 library donors and businesses that were not personally contacted during the campaign's silent phase. Fudges received have been applied to the donor's choice of either for the mortgage principal or the financial reserves. I'm happy to report the campaign pledge is currently $506,480, and we have exceeded our goal of $500,000, and the campaign is not over yet. The library will be closed for Columbus Day on Monday, October 14th, and the library's flare system will be upgraded on Monday, November 4th. The library will close at 1:00 that day. The annual fund drive will begin after November 15th. Volunteers are needed to stuff envelopes on October 15th from 10 to, 10 to 12, October 18th from 10 to 12, October 22nd from 1 to 3, October 24th from 1 to 3. If necessary, October 28th from 10 to 2, and October 31st from 10 to 2. Please contact the library if anyone, anyone is interested in helping. A wine and cheese event will be held at the library Thursday, October 17th from 5:30 to 7:00. This event is in honor of those outstanding donors from last year. The 2020 budget is currently underway. August 2019 circulation was down 0.18% from August of 2018, and the August 2019 visitors numbered 12,964, and technology use was 1,266.
Thank you.
What do you include in that, like that 12,000 number, like is that actual, is that like access online, or...
No, it's actually people who have come through the door. They have a counter.
Okay.
Before, they sort of just, as people saw people coming in, but now the whole county has gone to accounting system because part of what is given out in county funds is based on how many visitors that you have, not necessarily in the size of your library, but how much it's used. So they all went to accounting system.
Wow, that's impressive.
Alright, thank you. Campbelltown, are you here with a report? Yeah.
For the month of September, we had 56 calls. Average personnel per call was seven, average response time, 3 minutes 53 seconds. Assisted Palmyra three times, Law &amp; five times, Annville three times, never seen one time, Law &amp; ambulance 17 times, and Hershey two times. There were six building fires, 17 medical assists, six accidents with injuries, four accidents with no injuries, one public service call, seven canceled en route, one automated fire alarm, and three control burns.
Thank you. Lon?
Keep it to fire since Ron's here, eight calls for the month. Two motor vehicle accidents, one structured fire, three wire incidents, four in the township, and four outside the township.
We took EMS off, but do you have anything you want to report?
I was...
On where?
Support the police murder thing.
Yes, thank you.
No, you usually do that, Jack, right?
I do.
Are you okay to do that?
I didn't bring it.
I can pull the numbers up and get it.
Yeah, I was not at meeting last night because of all those calls, so, as you saw till late, so I didn't get Jim's report.
That's alright, it's not on the agenda, so no one was expecting it.
Okay.
Unless you have, you want to chime in later during, at the end, you're more than welcome to. Thank you. Palmyra Area Recs and Parks?
Yeah, the rec commission did meet, the number for the falls, the numbers for the fall sports are relatively stable from year to year, and getting ready for the winter sports to come up here. It's a reminder that the high school pool is available for rental for parties, so, through the rec commission, so, but really the, the numbers have been really steady from, from year to year in terms of participants, which is good.
Alright, thank you. So the minutes that we have in our packet, the only one I had was the planning commission minutes, and then township officials. I had a couple of things, one, I had a bunch of people contact me about the depression on Forge as you head south. I contacted Scott Galbraith, and PennDOT has said it's on their list to patch. No date, but it's on there. The other thing was, I went to a Ducks Unlimited fundraiser, and they have duck boxes that I just didn't know if either of the supervisors were interested. I will pursue it if we are, but they have boxes that they're willing to donate. They suggested $20 donation, but I'm sure I can find some businesses that would do that, where they would put it in one of, in several different places. One, if we have a pond, they have specific boxes for that, for housing certain ducks. I'm not knowledgeable on what those are, but they have those, and they also have ones that go into repair and buffer areas. So I didn't know if that was something I should pursue, if either of you would be interested in supporting that?
Sure.
If I can get them done for no, for no cost, and they'll install them themselves.
Were you obligated to maintain them, or...
Nope, they come around and maintain them.
Okay.
So, alright, and then I'll pursue that, and I'll get back to you and have more definite information on that. Do you, either of you have anything?
I don't.
My...
Nothing? Okay. So moving on to Carriage Park, Keystone Builders modification to stormwater. Jenna, do you want to take this, or R2, do you have anything to add to this?
So my understanding is there's a cut slope and there's a, a ground water issue, and there was some underdrain that had been installed that is not functioning correctly, and they're proposing to remove it in its entirety and replace it with an upgraded system, 6-inch diameter pipe, crushed aggregate, the geotextile, all in accordance with recommended practices. My only comment on the sketch is, they're shown, I just had it here 20 seconds ago, the...
Do you want this one?
Terminus. So it would be, so they have a series of yard inlets, but they have nothing at the terminal end of, of the system. I would recommend an additional yard inlet for maintenance purposes, observation purposes, et cetera, be added. If we're running underdrain up here, we ought to, the yard drains aren't that expensive. I would recommend that they drop another one in at the very end of it.
Phil Grevels here from...
Okay, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, I mean, we extended, let me drop back a little bit, I guess there was a existing underdrain system installed by our construction team to try to help alleviate the system, but it wasn't obviously in accordance to a national standard. So the system I propose now would be more of a standard design for underdrained systems. I upsized it, I think originally there was a 4-inch pipe put in there, I went to 6. The system runs behind lots 42, 43, and then it'll come down the common property line between 43 and 44, lot 42 and 44. I extended it further up in the lot 42, was still within dehuesment, in order for us to be able to tie into some pump drainage from 42 into that system. That house has a, we believe, a spring condition there that some pumps are constantly running, so we're trying to keep that water from getting into the surface and swale to, so I outsized the, the, to a 6-inch. Pockebleation will regrade or reestablish the swale, and again, I'm happy to add another inlet at the terminal end, don't see an issue with that.
So what does the swale do then if we're putting in this pipe, and is the pipe and the inlets just slowing down what the swale can't handle?
The swale itself is relatively flat in nature, so what I'm, would propose to do is, that's why I added some additional inlets, I think the current system that is might have two, I'm adding one in each terminal direction, so we have a little more flexibility when we regrade that swale, or I'll say kind of rock and roll, get positive pitch, maybe put a hot point between two and kick the water to both those areas. I want, it's two things, A, I want to get the surface water running where it should go, not pond, and then B, to cut off any springs that might be there, and also, as I said, tie in that some pump drain.
And then as it's following down, am I seeing this right, that it's then going into a storm sewer inlet?
Going into the inlet, right. The swale, the swale discharges, disposed discharge that in anyway, so the only additional water that would be added to inlet would be anything we collect via the spring or any discharge from the some pump.
I see there, is there a resident here?
Two.
Two residents here, did you guys want to speak at all? This would be your time, if you had something to say?
Yes. My, my first thing that I noticed is, you know, maybe this is not a complete sketch, but I didn't see a proposed grade, you know, as a 1% grade or 0.5% grade, you know, I want to make sure that the positive flow is maintained from, my house is the one where the problem house is, where the some pump constantly running, and...
Will you state your name and your address so that we have the minutes accurate, please?
Okay, yeah, my name is Susil, S-U-S-H-I-L, and last name A-D-H-I-K-A-R-I. And I'm 438 Route 11.
Thank you. No, that's, it's okay, thank you.
So my first point was the, to make sure the grade is, maybe they have on the plan, but I just didn't see it here, so I just want to make sure that the, you know, the proposed underdrain system has a, has an appropriate positive grade, you know, positive flow. And the second thing that I did not see on the plan is, I didn't see what's the plan to attach the end of this underdrain to the some pump inlet, I mean, is it the same plan? You know, the way it is, or, you know, what is the plan to connect the end of the proposed thing to the some pump outlet? I mean, what, what is the plan to connect that? And yet, there are the two mindbending, I'm sorry.
Do you have a response for either of those?
So the grading, I did not show the grade in the swale, because I'm working on the existing topography based on preconstruction of these houses, so as I said in my notes, we're going to set the, the elevations of the grades based on the swale conditions that exist. As I said, I added some additional inlets, so it's too flat. Between the two inlets here, I can actually go up, create a high point, and go back down and create, it gives me the ability to create a better, you know, swale grading condition. I didn't, I mean, we'll, we'll tie the some pump directly in, or I don't really have details for that. My intent was tied in right directly into the 6-inch perforated pipe, a little grade.
Makes sense.
Right now, I believe there's a pipe that flows over around.
It does.
And you, you can connect a some pump straight to a drain like that?
Yes. You can. Yeah, he's actually proposing to use 6-inch Schedule 40, which is pretty stout pipe, and I mean, it's large but standard fittings that, I'm guessing your some pump discharge might be inch and a half?
I think, yeah, that's...
Yeah, so you can get the fittings to put that all together. The only concern is, and in the days of MS4, there's illicit discharge, so if something gets spilled in his basement?
Right, that's why I was...
Gets into the some pump, goes into the system, it's into your storm sewer system, and there's a potential for illicit discharge. The flip side is, if the system is working well, this collection system that it could backfeed, so we want to put some, make sure there's a check valve in there somewhere so that the swale water doesn't get pushed back into the house.
Pushed back into the cell, yeah.
Correct. I mean, personally, I'd rather see the some pump a surface discharge through the yard into the system because it's visible. If something happens by mistake, who knows, the paint gets knocked over, whatever, it's not a, I think the risk is small, but it's still visible that someone can see, geez, there's something coming out that pipe in the backyard, it doesn't look the right color, it doesn't look like water. But it's...
Questions?
So I, I'm going to abstain from voting on this because I have a business relationship with the applicant, but my suggestion would be to pipe, would be the opposite, would be to pipe the downs valve, or the some pump separate all the way to the inlet. That way, even in dry times of surface, if his some pump is running all the time, that you're not continually charging that area. That would be my suggestion, but as far as I understand your concern, but I think the risk is minimal, and ultimately, if he had some type of issue, he would be financially responsible for the cleanup regardless of you, you know, he doesn't have fuel oil, but if he'd have a fuel oil tank or something, he would be obligated, so I, I would be concerned with that.
Digging the trench, laying the pipe in is minimal.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine Bill would object to that, but...
If I'm going to go that, the, rather than my role, I'm going to downgrade it to a 6-inch, or from a 6-inch to a 4-inch.
4-inch.
I have sized it, assuming I was going to have additional load, but...
For the some pump specifically?
Yeah, so if I was going to run it all the way, you know, some pump discharge going in, then I would take the underdrain, so I'll make it a 4-inch perforated, silver grade.
We deal with these things all the time.
Yeah.
Either way, it's not really going to have any adverse effect. It's going to accomplish the same thing, it's preference.
Is that...
I know with the 4-inch, I think Mike wanted to make sure, and that one, in front of me, he just wanted to make sure that there were cleanouts already, 50 feet, I think he said?
Well, if we're, if we're... If we're using the Schedule 40 as opposed to the corrugated stuff on the wall? If we're using the Schedule 40, you can hear that, and it's stiff, it's a nice straight shot. The inlets are close enough that I think that would suffice. I don't know if you, Jack, if you think that's...
Yeah, I wouldn't put cleanouts every 50, if they're just going to mow over and bust the caps off, the lay, the grass goes down, and it totally defeats the purpose.
I actually would like to speak on that point, though.
Sure.
Justin Julius, 432 Route 11. This is listed as like an open system, it's perforated, it has these, these caps that are open, when the problem has nothing to do with storm runoff from the hill or anything to that effect. We're creating an open system to allow things to either break or get into that pipe that doesn't need to be there. I would ask that it be, you know, solid pipe, and just be a water flow into the drain and not be open to allow silt, leaves runoff into all these open inlets from the top, as well as the, the water drain off out of the pipe, it being perforated, if it's not perforated. I mean, the, prior to Mr. Anakari's house being built, there was no drainage, you know, wet, soppy issue in the yard, wet, soppy issues caused from the house being built on a spring.
Engineer, do you...
We're, we're putting underdrain, I mean, the standard practice to use perforated pipe, that's buried under the ground, wrapped in stone, so the pipe itself is well protected. There's a handful of inlets, they typically have a some in the bottom of it, so when the debris falls to the some, we clean that out, it doesn't get in the pipe system itself.
Well, we also, we have, currently we have two inlets to it, and now we're adding an additional one, which is just another, like I said, like Mr. Custer said.
Total of four.
Two of which fall on my property, then now I'm going to be responsible for cleanout, and I have no, no stake in this game, so other than it runs through my property, it's now my headache.
You have no comment on that?
No, I mean...
Do you have any better solution to the issue that we have here?
I was good with one at each corner.
I, I think, you know, it's going to be hard to grade the swale, it's fairly flat back here. I was trying to provide some relief points should, you know, we get to a situation in swale where, I mean, we have to at least get 2% in grass swale to get a positive flow, I mean, less than that, you know, pond, it's hard to grade in grass less than 2%. So the inlets will give us the ability to, as I said earlier, to make some deviations in a swale to get a drain properly, I mean, you know, I mean, the other choice is to take all this out and just grade the swale as best I can on the plan, I don't do any like...
Well, what if this piping doesn't work, then what happens? What is their recourse, anything?
Well, we'll have it, some pump discharged and on the ground, hope it can convey through the swale, that was the intent and the original design, I could go back to that on the subdivision plan, I'm not proposing to, but that, that is the intent, I mean, intent of the swale is to convey water, I could take all piping out, not put any piping back in, adjust the swale grading as close to the plan as possible, and let everything flow that way. I, I wouldn't recommend it.
I'm not sure that I would, I mean, I'm not sure that I would recommend that either. I understand there is a groundwater issue, and a flat swale is not an ideal situation for dealing with that. And I think what they're proposing is a good way to deal with it, it's just a matter of these two gentlemen coming to agreement, have crosses property with it. If you're, if you're saying that you don't need an inlet in your property, that could be a closed access point at that juncture.
I could eliminate the one, again, there's a, I showed the, I guess between the 45-inch or, you have a plan up there, by the way?
Yeah.
The one, I guess, the second one, I could eliminate that one and really just put an elbow, you know, I could, for the underground, I could eliminate that one inlet. Again, I prefer to keep it, but I could eliminate, but I mean, the Schedule 40, I'm not going to be able to flex too much, I'll probably have to get a, an elbow for that.
Patrick, do you have anything in regards to this legally? I mean, why is the township...
Well, that's, I was going to try and clarify from one of...
Well, that's, I was going to try and clarify from what I'm listening to. Developer, builder, sold the lots, now there's two residents, maybe three, two, and there's clearly a groundwater issue on one of the properties. And the easements have already been dedicated, these are township easements at this point, correct? Correct?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm not.
I mean, they.
We just built house.
We, to enforce, it's the, they are stormwater easements.
Mm-hmm.
It's the property owner's job.
Responsibility.
To maintain, to maintain it according to the original plan.
Right. But this is an intent, an arrangement, almost a resolution between the builder, developer, and the residents to try and resolve this ponding water issue that's developed on the property.
Just to clarify, Patrick, the builder is not the developer here.
Right.
There's, they're two separate parties.
Okay. And you are the.
The builder.
The builder. All right, so this is a, an effort between the builder and the residents to try and resolve that issue. And it sounds, there's been no application before the township, this isn't a stormwater plan.
It's a modification of the plan, the developer's plan, subdivision land development.
And this is, and this is a system that will be the requirement, it will be the responsibility of the property owners to maintain once and if it's installed. But it is within, are you saying it's within the entirety of stormwater easement?
Yeah.
I think I heard you say that.
There's a 30-foot wide drain easement, so I have the, basically where I have the subdivision land development swale.
Okay. And the residents, you've been in constant communication with the builder, I guess, to come up with this and.
No.
No, I, I'm not spoken with these gentlemen.
Okay.
I may brought in here again.
Lucky you.
My construction team handled this up to this point, so I take it out of the.
So, it might be before you just to, I don't want you to, I don't think you necessarily need to vote on it, but maybe keep the engineer in the loop.
It's, it's going to need to be voted on, and it's going to need to be recorded, the modification.
But there's been no formal application, correct? There's, this is just a, is this, has it been signed?
This is the formal, we don't really have an application.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, this is a request from the builder and property owners for a modification to the existing stormwater. It's pretty, I'll be honest with you, that's pretty loose. You got, you got property owners, you got a builder. I would suspect we want something a little bit more concrete to make sure everyone's on the same page before the township says anything with respect to yes or no. If they're asking for maybe, if you'd be amenable to allowing something like this to occur, maybe you can give them an idea tonight, and then if that's the case, maybe get something a little bit more concrete between the builder and the property owners?
Can I ask a question? So, if the, if the community's been dedicated, why does it need to be a modification of subdivision, I can simply do some kind of grading from an application handle?
It's within, it sounds like it's within a stormwater management easement.
It's in a storm drain easement.
Storm, by the way, it's a township storm drain easement.
You're, you're changing the existing, basically, you're changing the plan of record, and we need to memorialize that plan of record so that when all of us are not, not here any longer, and the plate gets clogged up and it's out front of your basement, you go, hey, wait a minute, we have that information in the chain of title, go back and say, yes, this is done in 2019, here's the maintenance requirements are spelled out, et cetera.
I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're asking you to submit a whole new provision to the subdivision land development application or anything like that. It's a simple, could be a simple, maybe a lack of words tonight, but something in the stormwater management ordinance, maybe like a modification to an existing system, just even if there's no form, just a letter request with a copy of this or something similar to it signed off by the builder and/or the property owners, and that'll be something for the board to act upon.
Right.
At this point, it sounds like, correct, I mean, tell me, board, are you, if, assuming all the parties feel that this is a way to resolve the issue, would the board be amenable to approving something like this, given the appropriate application and request from the parties involved?
Yes, but it doesn't sound. Sorry, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. What, are you on lot 43?
I am.
Okay. And the other, the property owner for lot 42 is not here?
Forty.
Oh, you are 42?
Yes.
Okay. So, who's 44? Is that 40, lot 44 not affected?
He's not here, but, I don't know, you're saying it's common area? He says it's his backyard.
Oh, no, it's, it, there's an easement.
There's an easement there on lot 44.
He's not here.
He's not here. Have you spoken to him?
He was involved in.
Has he seen these plans, do you know? I know this is all hearsay, I'm just curious as to, okay.
And what's his?
He just wants a resolution.
Okay, and.
So, it's, it sounds like the residents want it resolved. It sounds like at least the builder and the township engineer seem to think this is a good.
To start. I mean, I, I, this is the first we've heard the concerns from the gentleman with about the open system, so I mean, that's something we can certainly take a look at.
And you'd prefer not to have three, I'm looking, you have one at each quarter, and then there's one in the middle here.
One, yeah.
And you'd prefer not to have that?
I mean.
Is that what I heard?
Yes, simply yes. If the, the one closest to 42, if, if that's on Mr. Akari's property, the, and the other one is right on, it's right on the line of my property in 44, I mean, if they're on the line, they're accessible by both properties, I mean, I'd be, you know, okay with that. It's that one in the middle now. As Mr. Custer said, you know, mowing, break the top off, or leaves, grass, all kinds of debris getting in there. I understand it's supposed to stop things from filling up in there and debris and stuff like that, but if we end up with a blockage, it all backs up and we're back in square one.
Well, I'll defer to, is that possible to do just two? You're right, suggesting adding another one.
Could we hard cap it, the top, instead of.
Eventually, yeah. I mean, that could be, so what we look at is wherever there's a break in the system, a bend, I'd like to have something there to get into it for maintenance purposes.
Mm-hmm.
If there's not an issue with stormwater, surface water, that you need the pipe to get rid of the surface water, and it's merely a conveyance for the sump pump.
I think Bill was relying on that for a great positive slope.
Correct. I mean, so if, if he's okay putting them at either lot, why you could correct them higher, create a higher high point in the middle and get one and a half percent slope in both directions. It's not two, but it's better than less than one. Then a, some sort of a closed system, I mean, it could even be buried under a couple inches of topsoil, so it's protected from mowing equipment, that's fine, as long as we know that if we measure.
From the point, you can find it.
Forty-seven feet, poke around, it'll trade here, and we can get in, pop the cap off, and have access.
Does that sound amendable to you?
I mean, that's, that's not insurmountable.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to me like anything is insurmountable, so what, what do we need to do tonight?
Well, I think, you're getting direction tonight, and from comments from the residents and the board, at least the board's engineer, so I would suggest, whatever revisions the engineer just went through, assuming everyone's on, on board and agreeable to it, make those, and then send a, I don't know if there's a formal process or, or a form for the township for this type of a modification, but maybe just a letter.
I had made a form, we didn't really have one. I did make a form and send it to Pat, but it didn't work like this.
Okay.
And it's really not much.
Okay, it could be probably a letter request, or if you have a form, fill out the form, and then at the next board meeting, if it's what everyone has agreed to, and it looks like it's going to work after you've looked at it, it would be a, a motion by the board to authorize them to do the work within the storm drain easement.
What I would suggest is for the parties to get together and come up with an agreeable layout of, in terms of what you're willing to do, what you're willing to accept in your yard, what's going to work, how are we going to handle the sump pump connection, all that good stuff, is it run lines, is it two lines? You know, if the sump pump runs through your yard, it's going to be, should you be liable to maintain the sump pump discharge line? Iron out all those questions amongst yourselves, and then bring that finished product back to us if we look at.
Is that something you're?
When is the next board meeting?
I don't remember.
You trying to seed it? I was trying to get it done, well, again, I'm not trying to rush, but I'd like to get the work done, and if I push in November, December.
Are actually agreeable to who I'm getting it done to, so.
It's a, it's a very minor, minor revision. I'm, I'm not, I'm not about dragging it through many, many meetings. They're, they're very minor, and if the homeowner's okay with it, I'm not trying to sway you guys' opinion.
No, but if it's, are you, approve it.
This is literally pretty simple, they happen all the time.
Can we, can we, can we?
Do you want to make a motion?
I'm just, well, no, I want to check with something first, with Patrick. So, can we approve it, like contingent on them, like?
Conditional approval?
Conditional approval, the conditions would be that the proposed modification is revised pursuant to the discussion this evening, subsequent to the township engineer reviewing it and approving it, the residents being on board with it, and I would still make it a condition that they formally fill out something and submit to the township, so it's something on file, and then also having the township get a, getting a final, whatever that.
A final plan.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do you send the builders approval?
Yes.
If there's a level of comfort I can offer, redo this in other places, and a lot of times it's field discussion. We'll get a sketch like this just to make sure everybody understands what we're doing, put it in the file, and.
I just want to make sure it gets tucked in the files, so that way, when, like you said, when we're not here, and the homeowner, new homeowners wondering, what is this, and what do I have to do? We have someplace to put it.
And I would disagree with Patrick, that the best way to do it is, I mean, the whole nine yards, because unfortunately, the handshake days are slipping away from us. Memorializing it, action by the board so that it's in the, in the minutes of the book is not the worst thing that you could do.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
I will.
Okay. Sorry.
And I, one additional, it's, it's understood, probably on the plan, because the drain easement is the responsibility of the property owner, but similarly, also conditional upon these additional pipe improvements are going to be the responsibility, once they're installed, for ongoing maintenance for the property owners. I mean, that's on the.
Right. I, yes. So, I make motion for conditional approval. Can I, contingent upon, of the review of the township engineer?
Yep, yep.
Agreement of the homeowners and the builders.
Okay, I'll second that.
Can I make one?
Questions? Yep.
I would suggest maybe add, I was planning on having attachment here out there for inspection as soon as we do the work, so you may want to add that to, you know, a level of comfort with the board.
Okay, do you want, is that agreeable to add to your motion?
Yeah, I can modify my motion.
Just a suggestion about it.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions?
So.
Okay. Good? All right, moving on, flight path one.
Just, thank you guys for all working together, and like, we can figure this out, so appreciate it.
All right, moving to flight path one. Hi.
I'm Stacy Longer from Light Idol, representing Chad Weaver with Flight Path.
Yes.
We have a few waivers we need to talk about, we want to take a look at the plans quick, we'll do the plans first.
Sure. Mark, do you want to mirror him, Marla?
I can read it upside down. What we're doing here is a land development plan to build a recreational facility for volleyball tournaments, not tournaments, but volleyball courts on the one lot that's remaining in the flight path development. First couple sheets, you've seen this a few times.
Yes.
We'll just go to the site improvement plan, which is the first one to look at everything. We've been through the township planning commission, we've been through, we're on our third official letter, and we have the fourth letter here from the township engineers that has a few things that we need to talk about. But basically, what you have is you got a small office area of 5,000 square feet, and then you got 14,500 square feet of athletic courts, and like I said, it's going to be volleyball. We have two entrances to the property, we have adequate parking, the parking meets, it's, parking is at the maximum allowed by your ordinance. You have a minimum, you have a maximum, we're at the maximum. Everything's been thoroughly reviewed by the planning commission. We will talk about the sidewalks in a little bit. And there's one other slight change. We had a meeting with Chad Friday of last week to discuss, this has been designed right now with the PBZ, PVC liner in the basin. After a lot of discussion with Chad, Chad has a lot of history constructing things in the site, in and around this area. This basin is not going to be dedicated to the township, you know, he, he'll be able to fix any sinkholes that arise, he plans on owning the property for some time, we're requesting to remove the liner from the design.
Anything else on the plan?
Sure.
You want to discuss?
Well, I didn't know if you had any questions on that.
Whether it was a question out in the.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
Chad Weaver. I know the engineer isn't in, in favor and agreement with that, but in the 20-some years we've been doing it, the only issue that we've had in the, in the complex with ponds is the only pond with a liner in it. And I look at just from a nuts and bolts aspect of it, it's not being dedicated to the township. That liner even, that the size as it is, is coming at about a $40-some thousand dollar cost, and looking at what we do for a living, it seems like it makes way more sense to save that money and be able to maintain the pond in a condition that, you know, most sinkholes, if, if taken care of, don't impact the surrounding area. And currently, the only, like I said, the one across the street is the first one that we did that has a liner in it, and the whole center went down some, I don't know, five, six years after, and there's really no good way of repairing it. So, I look at it from more of a common sense cost standpoint, the money that we're going to spend to put a liner in it can be, you know, saved, and, and so that pond can be maintained. Generally speaking, if you have something that's surface, you can get in and maintain it pretty easily.
Okay.
So, that's my opinion.
I assume our sound will require, require PVC?
Oh, and the carbon geology, I think, is what's kicking in.
And it doesn't allow provisions for clay liner?
It does, well, it doesn't say in the ordinance, and it doesn't even actually require a liner. It requires the evaluation of car soils and the geology, and some way to deal with that issue, is how the ordinance is written, it's like one sentence.
I would think, and you can do it work in this area more so than me, I would think there's sufficient clay.
I don't think you need to do too much studying to figure out the 422 corridor for as far as you can see and throw.
But I mean, I'm guessing it's limestone soil, so there should be decent clay subsoil in there that you could get a liner that would do the same thing, as part of your dirtwork, it would do the same thing as the synthetic liner. I agree, I mean, that's expensive, and I'm not a fan of synthetic liners because of the repair issues and maintenance issues.
They're extremely difficult to install and get 100%.
Correct.
And when they do fail, they're giant.
Yep. It's pretty significant.
So this request didn't go through the planning commission then?
No.
And I don't know that it would need to be a waiver request versus them addressing the results of a carbon geology study. So if they were able to come up with something that's equal to the synthetic liner, we'd probably be okay with that. To say, I don't know if putting a liner in it at all, we know that in a sinkhole prone area, I know that that's, was that the middle of the field if it was very far away from the township or public street?
Well, what is the proposal then? You're saying you don't want to do that liner?
We don't want to do a liner this time.
So there's no liner that you want to do? Correct?
That's what I'm asking.
Nothing.
You got, exactly.
Well, I want to know what you're asking.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. What else do you have to?
We have a landscape plan, lighting plan, plan and profiles of all stormwater facilities, stormwater features. They're pretty minor. We have two inlets discharge pipe, D W N wall, pretty simple system to get the water in the basin. Most of it sheet flow through swales and across the parking lot. Got all our applicable details. Getting the landscape plan. Lining plan. Escape plan. It was done by a landscape architect. As your ordinance requires, the trees spread around the property, and some interior trees in the parking lot, it meets your ordinance. Lighting meets your ordinance.
Okay. And you mentioned sidewalks.
Yes, I thought we talked about sidewalks, we're going to talk about that waiver right off the bat? Take that one first?
Yes.
Sidewalk waiver. Defernment. It would not be a waiver. We are, we, this is the one waiver we did not get a recommendation, positive recommendation from the planning commission. Since this is at the end of the development, there's, you know, there's a big stormwater basin here that you would have to tear out the bank of the stormwater basin to extend the sidewalk here. We're asking for deferment of the entire sidewalk.
Do you have any comments either of you? I know this went back and forth from the planning commission, and then it was at the last, was it the last one, Jenna? That they wanted us to then look at the whole flight path plan and make a priority of what sidewalks should be done when?
Correct.
That's correct. It was considerable discussion.
I imagine so.
Three meetings worked.
Right.
The planning commission originally recommended that the sidewalks go in. There were two prior subdivision planes, I think, for this area that deferred the requirement to install sidewalks until the township determined they were necessary. I'm paraphrasing that modification request. At the planning commission meeting, the planning commission said we'd like to see sidewalk go in. So we got a plan with sidewalk on it. At the last planning commission, we rescinded, by adopting additional motion, rescinded that and asked that the supervisors look at it and put, sidewalk inward made sense to put sidewalk in, whether that was along a street or internal connectivity from one lot to another sort of thing. I think was ultimately where the planning commission ended up. When we got this most recent plan in, we saw the sidewalk is on the plan, so we pulled that waiver request out of our letter, which is why it's not in the one that you had before you, the letter that you had before you tonight, so it's.
Right, because the sidewalk was on the plan and.
They would not give me conditional plan approval unless they showed the sidewalk. They were aware I was going to come to you and ask for a sidewalk deferment, but they would not pass the plan along until it looked like you see it.
I mean, basically, you guys don't want to do any sidewalks anywhere.
Correct.
Chad, did you want to speak on that sidewalk issue?
Well, I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of, I mean, there was a lot of discussion, but only one part person actually offered an opinion that mattered to the planning commission. But, you know, one of the things that he said several years ago was that it's virtually impossible, or he made it sound as though, you know, the township's probably not going to go back and pull deferments, and everybody in the development and flight path have sidewalk deferments that I'm aware of. So I guess my question is, to me, it would make logical sense to give a deferment on that lot, because if you're not going to pull the deferment of Paramount.
I would not say we're not willing to look at pulling deferments.
Well.
At some point in time.
And that's not my argument. If, to me, if you're going to pull the deferments of the rest of lots, it would make sense, at least at this point, instead of having a sidewalk on the corner of Brant and Landings to go to nowhere, why not give the deferment until you're, I mean, you know, if the township only gets around to it in three years, what's the point of having on the opposite side of the development? Part of my issue, I guess, is at the first planning commission, there were members that didn't even know where the location of the site was in conjunction with the plan, and, you know, one of the members even said, well, why don't we compromise and put it on land? I mean, there's a lot of discussion. There really isn't discussion, it's one guy that wants it in his way. And my thinking is, everybody else has a deferment. If, I'm not saying that we want waiver, deferment's fine, if they're going to pull the deferment on every other lot, then it would make sense to do it together. But he explained to us that the deferments are going to be difficult because they don't really have any kind of bond hold. So it just seems stupid to waste $30,000 on a sidewalk that's going to go to nowhere. So it seems logical to keep the same deferment that everybody else has.
But if we were to pull the deferments on the whole land or on the whole plan, then that would go to the people that own Paramount, it would go to the library, it would go to the people that now currently own those properties.
Correct.
And they have to install sidewalks.
Which that doesn't change whether we get a deferment on this lot or not. It's just, you know, in my mind, I can, I mean, obviously, the planning commission wants sidewalks. So it's like, well, okay, if, but they, I mean, they said two meetings ago that it's very difficult for them to pull deferments.
I would not characterize the planning commission, by the way, and I'm on it, so let me, let me speak. I would not characterize the planning commission as just wanting sidewalks because they want sidewalks. I think the planning commission is looking at sidewalks because a lot of, because of the way the sites developed, and it's, I think, different from what was previously anticipated. I don't think we're trying to like go, hey, we're going to pull all these deferments for sidewalks. I think we're looking and going, what makes sense? And I think that that was difficult to, because you are looking at one plan, right, as the planning commission, but then we also have to like be cognizant up here, which is a little different, of what the whole.
Well, I think I agree with that. That's why my point is, the deferment makes sense, I mean, I can't tell what the plan is, but to put it on one corner and have 700 feet in between doesn't, you know, so the township's plan is to pull all the deferments or to have a plan, it seems to make sense that at the time that would, that would be better.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, again, I think the planning commission was looking to figure out a way to, to deal with what at least we perceive as a prop. And I know there's different people that perceive that differently. I get it.
Can I, what exactly was, because I guess that's what I'm partially confused about where the problem is, because the problem that was discussed at the meeting had to do with tournament traffic and people crossing the street, and I guess that's where it's like, there's, they keep issuing, discussing a problem, this is in the exact opposite corner.
That currently doesn't have traffic.
What?
I mean, currently, that corner doesn't have the traffic because there's nothing there. But we're going to add another sporting event to the corner.
Well, there's people walking all over when there's anything going on there. So the more you can guide them to walk, the better, is of my opinion, and get them out of the street, because there's so many cars flying every which way. But I see your point, and I agree, it's, we're kind of at the point where we either make all the sidewalks go in or defer them until we're ready to do that. I understand the compromise part that some of the planning commission members were saying, maybe some of them aren't deemed necessary, but how do you pick and choose that? I'm not a sidewalk expert.
No, I know. I, I could see how those got deferred when the original park went in, but it has developed into something that, you know, wasn't proposed to be, which I'm not saying that's negative or positive, I'm just saying that's what happened. So I agree with Chad, though, like either we're going to, if we're going to, if we're going to look at the rest of them, like then we just put this on the, on the list with them in their entirety. If our plan is just to make everybody, you know, if we're going to pull those deferments, then that's the route I think we should go. It's my opinion.
Just one more thing, just to correct it. I am not the owner of this lot, I am representing my client. He had made reference that it's my job, it's not, I'm just a developer, general contractor, so I'm just, I mean, it's not, I'm not the owner of this lot.
My mistake.
So the owner of the lot is then prepared to deal with a non-liner in this?
We signed a waiver.
Stormwater basin?
Yeah. I mean, I'm representing the owner on their behalf. I'm just, to correct the record, I mean, in my mind, what I'm saying is, I completely get what your plan is, I agree that the park didn't start out the way it is now, I might have a different opinion on sidewalks, but to me, if, if everybody has a deferment, you have basically inevitably a decision whether you're going to pull them or not. It just, it would make more sense that it all happens together as opposed to just putting a lot in the corner. That's my only comment.
Okay. Do we want to start going through, or do we need more discussion? Do we want to start going through the requests here then? So at the beginning here, we have 306, which is a submission of preliminary plan, and it's recommended by the planning commission to do a final, final major land development plan. A waiver is being requested for that. Do I have a motion for that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. So we're on to the sidewalks. Requirement of concrete sidewalks. Do I have a motion for that, for a deferment or for them to be installed?
Question.
Yes.
Can we, general question. When we require a deferment, like this is something, like some of these deferments, I hate deferments, I've heard me say that before.
If you, if the board decides to go the deferment route, what I would recommend is the condition of that deferment would be to have the owner sign and record a declaration of covenants against the property and to post some type of financial security to ensure that it is installed, what if the township decides they need it to be installed?
Be agreeable to that, Jen?
No.
I would make a motion that be granted.
With those conditions?
With the conditions Patrick proposed.
Do I have a second? Hang on. I'll second it. Do I have a question? Yes, Connie?
Yes, I just was wondering about the other ones that were deferred, what was written down for that, for the other ones?
Don't know, I have to pull it. Besides the fact that they're deferred. Yes.
My understanding is the subdivision plan has a blanket deferment when we recorded the original plan.
Okay. There's your answer. 2003?
I think, yeah.
Is that somewhere around there? Okay. Any other questions? Bill, do you have something you need to?
I don't know. No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any denial?
No.
Okay.
No denial or no?
No, it's a no vote.
No vote, sorry. Moving on to stormwater management ordinance 305G.
That one changes a little bit because you're not using.
Because of the detail, yeah.
You're not using a liner.
Yeah, and we'll have to modify the way the waiver was written.
Well, you're going to withdraw that and proceed, call it in of some sort.
My question's still on the table if you guys are going to require a liner.
Well, I guess we should address that first.
First.
Are we moving down then to number six? Stormwater management ordinance 305N, basin bottom slope. Is that what I'm looking at? No.
No.
That's not it either. It's not on there.
It's not on here because we didn't request a waiver, right?
Because there's not a specific section that requires.
Right, you have to address the condition.
Well, actually, isn't it not on here because?
Well, the liner question.
They were, they requested a waiver of the investigation of the carbonate geology features, and because of the liner, that waiver was not an issue.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Whereas if they're requesting not to have to put in a liner, that waiver's going to have to go away, I suspect. Right?
Well.
We'll have to be discussed.
Yeah, that's the question. You mentioned clay. You mentioned clay. You're talking about doing no liner at all.
That's what I'm talking about right now.
Well, we're talking about a PVC liner, I thought.
Yeah. They're talking about switching from a PVC to a clay liner.
Yeah, I don't know.
What are you asking for?
Well.
You don't want the PVC because you're stating that it doesn't work effectively.
Yeah, I mean, the soils, I mean, there should be clay. The soil's unsidered that way.
So are you saying you'd put in a clay liner?
That's kind of.
So Chad, can you pull a test, get these guys to run it to somebody and say it's adequate for a liner?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, that can be done.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we want it to work, or we could, I'm asking that we don't put the PVC liner in it, but I don't, to say that we can test the soils that they're, I mean, everything in there's pretty much been a decent clay.
Well, we can, we can put, switch a PVC liner to a clay liner. Would you be suitable to that?
Yeah, and a liner is really all that we look for, is suitable material, whether it's PVC or whether it's clay. A clay liner is more than adequate.
Plus, yeah. Plus, I agree. I don't like the PVC, yeah.
So we're going to switch, we're going to modify the plans from PVC liner to a clay liner?
That's fine with me.
Am I hearing a motion to that effect then? Is that even amendable since the same?
Yeah.
I'm a little confused how we got to the PVC liner without, you're saying if, if the investigation leads you there, you don't want to put it in.
Well, Chad didn't want to put it in because of the cost, because of ability to repair.
I hear that, but I'm, I'm curious how we got to where it was required.
They put the liner in lieu of doing the carbonate geology study.
Okay.
They said rather than do that, we'll put the liner in. And, I mean, that achieves the same result as doing a carbonate geology study, determine there is or.
Well, but then if the, if the study came back, they would have put it in anyhow.
Correct. But if we're going to do a clay liner in lieu of the proposed PVC liner, in my book, that's an even trade.
And no study needs to be done? Just a clay liner needs to be put in there? Is that what I'm?
It's, it's, it's an even trade, as long as they demonstrate that the material is impermeable. So there's test, there's testing, and there's a certain level of impermeableness, that's not the right term.
There'll be specifications put on the plan saying, oh, impermeable, no, I'm doing it too, how this clay has to hold up and how it has to be installed and lifts and different things like that. The specifications, the details will change the specifications. It's a minor change.
I'd make a motion that we grant the waiver of PVC liner, conditional upon a clay liner being installed that is accepted by the township engineer.
In order for something to be waived, we're going to have to cite to a specific section in the sound, and I don't know.
I don't think it's a waiver more than.
I think it would be more of a whether or not the board, based upon the township engineer's comments, is agreeable to allowing a clay liner as opposed to a PVC liner for the basin. I don't know if it's a waiver. I don't know.
That's why I was asking, how did we get to the PVC?
I can, I actually have the wording of the ordinance.
I'm fine. I don't, I'm not interested in, in.
What section is that?
Section 302L, which it's one sentence, "The design of all facilities over karst geology shall include an evaluation of measures to minimize adverse effects such as sinkhole and groundwater contamination." It doesn't specifically say a liner. It says you should evaluate. So I don't think that a waiver is needed. I think just approval from the engineer and your approval to go from a PVC liner to a clay liner is all we need.
So they could go through the process of doing this whole evaluation and come back and say no liner whatsoever is required. But we know when we're working in limestone soils that the chance of that happening is what, Stacey?
Unlikely.
Really? So he said, I'm not going to, I don't want to spend the money to do the study, I'll just put a liner in in lieu of, which is a common process.
So let's, I don't like to skip around, but if you look at number five on page two of Bertue's letter, it references 317C and 317D regarding the detailed field investigation of carbonate geology features.
So we could grant that.
When you get to that waiver, it would be a condition upon them proceeding with the clay liner in a manner and form acceptable to the township engineer.
So I'll amend my motion.
Assuming that's, does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay, do we have all the legal things figured out now? We're moving on to stormwater management ordinance 317C and 317D. Do I have a motion for that?
I would make.
We're skipping.
Yeah. We skipped.
Well, they're all related to one another.
Is that?
We're on number five.
Yeah, but these, this anti-seal collar is not required because they were going to put PVC liner.
Cross out everything you just wrote before.
So my motion would be that we grant the waiver for 317C and D, which is the detailed field investigation, conditional upon them installing a clay liner in lieu of the investigation.
Second.
Question? Clay liner.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where we're getting.
All those in favor?
There's too many numbers.
Aye. You guys it.
Do I need the first, Bill make the second?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, do I need to go over any of these other ones then? Three, four, or six, now that that has just been done?
I think you'll have to.
Yeah, there, there, there are waivers that are on the table. And if we're, I will say that if they're not putting a PVC liner in, our recommendation would be to require the anti-seal collar. And again, that's fairly standard construction practice with an earthen structure.
Okay.
So my recommendation might be for Stacy to formally withdraw that so the board doesn't have to disapprove it.
I agree with that. We'll formally withdraw that.
Yeah.
All right.
Submit that in writing.
Yep.
And stormwater management ordinance three oh five P?
Would still be applicable. And if they come back with good information on the clay liner, then I would be comfortable waiving that requirement.
So it's conditional based on what we just approved with five?
That's correct.
So do I have a motion in that regard?
I would make that move.
I second.
Questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Jumping down to number six. Stormwater management ordinance three oh five N basin bottom slope. Waivers.
So if the, the word is, again, if you would approve this, I would attach the same.
Conditional based on the clay liner results.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
New request that it didn't go, meaning it didn't go to the planning commission or?
That was a planning commission that got approval. Or recommendation.
Well, that was a change from NPDS made us make the change, I think.
Yeah, NPDS is kind of, if you're going with amended soils, they're going with flat bottom basins.
Unless anybody has any more discussion, I'd make a motion. We grant it.
I second.
Question? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Did we get through everything?
We got through all the waivers. Now, we, I will see conditional plan approval. We do have few minor comments from the engineer yet. One is to put a note on the fence detail that is a four-foot-high fence. The other one is to show some sidewalks across landing drive. And I think since we're doing the deferment, we can put a driveway across landing drive. Do you want one across both streets in the intersection?
If you're not putting sidewalk in, you don't.
I, I, I think we should still show the sidewalk on the plan because it's deferment, say it's a future sidewalk. Wouldn't you agree with that? So we document, no? Okay.
I would not, and I would.
Take, take the sidewalk off the plan.
If there's no sidewalk, I wouldn't put.
I mean, you might wanna put a note, put a note on it, somehow document it.
Yeah, we'll have to document it.
So since there's no sidewalk, right, we can't have the crossing stuff, right?
Correct.
I just, that's.
So if we were to pull all the deferments, then you're gonna have to put those in after you've already constructed them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Who would be responsible for the crosswalks?
Crosswalks can only technically be put in the pen dot if you have adequate handicap ramps on both sides.
Right, but what I'm saying is in the future, do these, will these deferments cover the cost of installing crosswalks as well?
I would defer to council, but that's all part and parcel of sidewalk installation. So in my mind, it would be the responsibility of the people that have to put the sidewalk in.
Yeah, I mean, the cost, the cost estimate of the financial securities that you'll require as part of the declaration for this deferment would include whatever the anticipated cost is of installing those sidewalks in if there are crosswalks anticipated.
Does the ordinance address it now? If they would've put those in, those sidewalks in, would they have been responsible for it now?
Well, it's ADA that actually drives it.
Yeah, it's not the ordinance. Yeah, they would. They would, because of.
Yes. The short answer is yes.
Okay.
And one of the questions we were batting around in our office is do we require crossing on one street or both streets? Well, ADA says you have to do both of them. And that, that's why you see, if you see Pen Dot do a signal and they put a short little piece of concrete.
That's why.
With a truncated dome, then you mean that ADA would fire.
So the last thing I have is requesting conditional plan approval. To work out these final few comments with the engineer and provide the cost opinion, well, we provided the cost opinion, but the securities have to be done. And the O and M agreement has to be completed, yeah. Minor, minor issues.
All right, do I have a motion to that?
Same with.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have questions?
There will be a motion to approve the final plan subject to the application complying with all the comments in the warrant set forth in September twelve, two thousand nineteen, the letter of. Subject to the township, to the satisfaction of the township.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. On a side note, do we wanna pick a time at some point to discuss those? In like February?
The waiver.
Done with budget and?
Probably should.
Yes.
Jenna, would you make a note? So make that a workshop in February? To pull that plan and look at it? The overall plan? Okay, well, of that section, it would be in the net and flight path. All right, moving on. In the net. Turf field dome, dome stormwater plan. I'm having a hard time talking this evening. Randy, did you wanna speak on this?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I'm gonna start by saying I'm not gonna talk about sidewalks or lines.
Perfect.
How about crosswalks?
No, probably crosswalks, yeah. Just wanted to, number one, have an update on the stormwater management plan for the in-the-net turf field. We did receive our signed zoning hearing board variance decision. That was about a month or so ago. Of course, with you folks, we had our land development plan approval. I'm also happy to report that the Federal Aviation Administration did issue us a no hazard letter for the height of the structure that had to do with your airport safety zones and of course, our obvious relationship to Royal Airport. And I will report that our stormwater management plan was submitted to the township roughly two weeks ago, I think, September twenty-fifth. So that process is well, well underway. The purpose of our visit and discussion tonight is to talk about the foundations for the, for the dome. Normally, that will come with a building permit and would be after all approval, stormwater management, everything like that was in place. Because of the conditions at the field here, there's no grading to be done. We know exactly where the foundations are going to go. I, I apologize it was just today, but I posed a question to Dawn in the township as to whether the township would consider issuing what some townships call a foundation permit. So that the work on the foundation only could begin prior to the stormwater management plan being totally approved, financial securities posted, those kind of things. It's about five weeks now from tonight until your next board supervisor meeting. I certainly think the stormwater management plan will be in condition for your consideration for approval that evening. But that's five weeks of time here in the fall when, I'm not, well, no, I will say it. We're gonna, Chad could lose that, all that time to start to do some site work so he can be ready and have the dome up and running to meet his commitments over the winter time for that facility. So just to kind of get him a jumpstart on five weeks of preparation and starting to get the foundations installed, I wanted to bring up that issue and see if that will be something that the township would consider. Some townships do it on a somewhat regular basis. I do not think this is honestly a regular request in this particular township. I do, I would, I would preface that by saying that this site is maybe a little more unusual than some others. Like I said, no site grading to be done. We could all walk out there tonight and see exactly where the footer is gonna go because it's in relationship to the turf field that's in place.
Dawn? Your thoughts?
Mainly the permit is for the footers. For the, the building permit. I mean, he can apply for building permits for the footers, but I'm, I'm not gonna, first of all, I need the letter. I need the letter before I could issue the zone permit. But I would not sign off on it unless the engineer said it's not gonna affect the stormwater. But they're doing the stormwater. So I would want their, their blessing before I sign off on it.
On the stormwater management plan?
Yes.
Well, what, let me understand.
Because we don't, we don't have that finalized yet.
The stormwater management plan is for the surface that the dome is gonna go over. Right?
Well, it's.
No. Well, we're the dome. We just made a dome.
Round off from the dome.
Okay. And then the footers you're asking for are what the dome can be attached to, I suspect.
Correct.
And these are, has there been, has there been anything submitted showing what the footers are gonna look like or how big or what they're made of?
Not specifically, but if you're really interested, they're two-foot wide and about six, six-foot deep. All the way around.
I mean, I think you put him on the spot. I don't think he's looked at anything. It's gonna be tough.
Well, not, not as it relates to the footers. We've looked at the plan. And I mean, anytime we're directing stormwater in next to a component of a building, even if it's, this, this is unique, we wanna make sure that we work comfortable with that because ultimately, if we recommend to you to approve it and it doesn't work, then we're all in the hot seat. Just, you know, typically, there's gravity. You know, there's a building setting on top of the footer helping to hold it down. In this case, it's actually working the opposite direction. It's, it's more to keep the.
Uplift.
Right. You put water next to concrete, I mean, concrete floats. Not well, but it can float. So we would want some level of assurance that the interface there is gonna work okay. It can be done. I mean, that's, that's not the difficult part.
Again, my point is that's a modification or adjustment if necessary for the stormwater management plan. Again, the footer is in absolute one-hundred percent relationship to the turf field that's out there now, so we can't move the footer.
The footer must go exactly where it's.
Right, I think it's roughly five feet from the edge of the turf.
Yeah.
So we don't have a choice there. So whatever we have to do to amend or modify the stormwater to match the footer, we've taken that into account already and we might have to maybe adjust it a little bit more.
I mean, the whole reason they're doing the modification to the stormwater is because they're cutting this out, so.
Right. So they must match. What are you asking from us tonight to approve a footer permit?
We don't have a footer permit.
Before the stormwater is approved.
Right.
Yeah, Chad?
Just a question. My understanding from the, what we were in last time, the, the stormwater design was gonna be approved by right, by the engineer. I thought we had to come back for supervisor's approval for the security agreement.
We do, I believe.
So I guess.
For the stormwater management.
So I guess, I was thinking what we were asking for is to go ahead and be able to make application and submit the footing permit because I, I mean, Frank's.
Which is the building.
I'm assuming we're getting to the end of that.
Yeah.
We don't have a footer permit.
Right, so. It would be a building permit. And the building permit normally what?
So you could pull a building permit to allow him to construct the footers. And that would be it.
Well, then you'd need the footer and the dome, I guess, is what we were thinking. But we're asking that just to put the, put the installation of the dome away from the footer.
Right.
So that can start earlier.
You need the stormwater approval to do the dome. You don't necessarily need.
The stormwater to do the footers.
I mean, I guess he could, he could do the permits a while and we could put that as a condition on the permit. If you're okay with them doing the footers and not putting the dome up until the, until the stormwater is approved, it could be a condition of the permit, but.
But, but, okay, let me, let me. So you, you don't need a stormwater. If, if you applied for a building permit to do the footers, you don't need a stormwater.
Well, we can make the argument that the footers are below ground. There's no impermeable area. Now, there's earth disturbance associated with the construction, but we can sort of address that with.
Right, so, so then would they have to? Is this like a two-phase building permit basis? Yes. Okay. So we can approve a building permit just for the footers, right? And not for the dome and wait till the stormwater management approval to do.
The dome.
A second, basically a second permit for a dome.
The one thing I will say is that, so you've already applied for the stormwater permit. Stormwater plan, stormwater. And you haven't submitted for the building permit, which is what you're gonna get for the footers.
Right.
And when they do, it's gonna be forwarded to Ritu. And I suspect if you were to entertain issuing that building permit for the footers, there would be clear conditions on it. One of them, it's conditional upon that, it's not an approval for the dome. It's a condition, it's approval for the footers. As well as, you're assuming, there's gotta be something in there indicating that you're assuming the risk, meaning if you put those footers in and then the stormwater, when reviewing the stormwater, there's an issue and you gotta move the dome or do something that's gonna screw the footers up, that's not on the township, that's on, that's on the applicant. So it's gotta be some kind of an assumption of the rest that if they're gonna proceed before the cart, the cart before the court.
I didn't.
Or before the horse.
I didn't bring the decision in. I should have. I'm pretty sure the zoning decisions that, um, they needed to get the stormwater for that. And the proper zone rename before they can proceed.
That's in the zoning orders?
I'm pretty sure.
Well, then it's in zoning.
Zoning order.
It's in zoning hearing decision.
Hey, it's in the zoning hearing board for variance.
Oh, yeah, I think we need to know what that's it.
If the zoning hearing board decision said a sequencing, we can't.
That all have to say all after.
I don't think it's a good idea to begin with to start. You know, if they're coming for stormwater, if they're coming for a land development plan to allow building to occur before the stormwater is approved, it just sets a very messy precedent, I think, for future plans in the.
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at it is, is so we can at least process that and get that moving so that, because my understanding was from the, from the last meeting that it was a matter of, the board didn't need to approve our plan, Ritu did. So they're, they're reviewing that now. If in two weeks they approve it, the reason that we have to come back in this, in November is to approve the security agreement, that this will at least let us keep moving.
I don't think there's anything preventing them from, you're talking about just applying for, not necessarily getting the permit, but.
Yeah, my assumption is, I mean, they've had it for a couple of weeks. So obviously, we're getting to the point where we're gonna get that.
They've already applied, I think.
Instead of putting that process in.
They're not applied for the building permit, yeah.
I think you could make your application for the zoning permit and the building permit and get that reviewed and approved. So that if everything, stars and the sun and the moon aligned and everything fell in place.
Well, I think Randy said you'd have your stuff then tomorrow?
I did not say that.
I thought that's what you said.
I thought it was yesterday.
No, yes, that's, yeah.
Second Tuesday.
When do you get meeting?
The workshop is our next meeting, which is.
The twenty-third.
Tomorrow, the twenty-third.
Well, what I'm saying is you might not get an answer, given all the unknowns at this point. Is the twenty-third gonna hurt you? this point. Is the 23rd going to hurt you? I would, I would say let's let them get some things in line, get, let R2, you know-
If we can, if we can get the footer design to take a look at in relation to the infiltration trenches around the perimeter of the site so we can give that a good, honest evaluation, that'll be helpful and we'll see what we can do to move along for you.
That's great.
Okay. So we don't need to do anything tonight. We're going to work to have it all ready to go the 23rd.
The last thing I want to do is hold this thing up. I mean, I understand you're under the gun with the weather.
23rd, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
I said that 20 minutes ago.
I just followed him. Do you want them to bring up sidewalk?
No. All right. So the 23rd for that. Moving on.
Thank you.
Sure. Mount Pleasant Ventures. Do we have someone here to speak on that? I believe we do. Hi.
Joshua, Christmas Engineering, here tonight for the Lindell Drive subdivision. Asking for termination on the waivers in front of you this morning, or this evening. And the outcome of those, request a conditional approval of the plan. So I don't know if you want to go with the waivers first. What we have, it's essentially the same one, the page four. We'll discuss any remaining comments.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, I don't see any problem with going through the first four, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, we've all hashed that out several times.
I believe so. We've discussed those in the past. And then I have some here if needed.
Okay.
Based on the discussion. So the first waiver, I'm going to verify that is for the processing of preliminary plan, preliminary final.
Yes.
At this point, section 503A1.
Do you guys need us to wait for a minute?
Yeah. I, for some reason, I was going back to flight path one. Was there supposed to be a traffic study completed with that development of that land? Because I didn't see it on the, I'm sorry, I forgot your time, but the last land development plan that was placed in flight path, there was money donated, or not donated.
Earmort.
In lieu of, in lieu of the traffic study that was going to be completed. And it was like $15,000 that they submitted to the township in lieu of doing a traffic study. But I don't, we didn't do that. I'm calling saying that on the review or the-
Yeah, it was in-
It was in their letter.
Was it a waiver or?
It just, it would be a condition, I would assume, because we based it on the condition of the letter.
So then we need to-
The comment is they need to provide a summary of the traffic to determine if a study is required.
Back page, item number three, subdivision land development.
Plan does not address traffic impacts from this development. The applicant shall provide a summary of projected traffic impacts to determine if a traffic study will be required.
Right.
Do you want to make them aware to, for that to be discussed on the 23rd? Is that fair?
I just want to make sure that's taken care of before anything else.
Okay. Sorry. Back online here. So we're back on 503A1. Do I have a motion for that? That's a submission of a preliminary plan.
Sub moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, any questions? All those in favor? Aye. 406N is our next one. And this is two points of access. You're asking for a waiver for that. Do I have a motion for that?
Sub moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Do I have any questions on that? All those in, oh, sorry.
What, what's the new plan? I mean, there's a lot on here. So it's really hard to-
Well, this was what we discussed before when we originally-
Right.
-looked at the plan. We're looking, they're looking for a waiver. Well, not originally. When did we discuss this? Two supervisor meetings ago? Does that sound about right?
Yeah. And I believe there was some discussion, Mr. Bober requested some sidewalk be added to the plan, which was added to the plan.
Yeah, that's my question. On one side, like?
Yes. I thought that was discussion from, from the cul-de-sac. We have sidewalk on the north side, which is the long side, from the cul-de-sac down to, to the edge.
What, what do you know?
I just went up before we drew out on the waivers.
Sorry?
Yeah. So, so as an update to the plan before we move along, we have the cul-de-sac here, the enlarged bulb, and then we have sidewalk from the cul-de-sac along the north side of the street to the intersection and then to the end of the property ending here.
That, I mean, you had mentioned, you had mentioned the adjoining properties and the sidewalks as well. Is that what you were expecting or?
Uh, I mean, it doesn't have to. So something's better than nothing. I said, you know, unlike the plan we approved previously out off a long road, it's, I think it's reasonable to believe that, you know, this is going to be connected to something.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I'm going to be, like, I mean, you did it halfway. I get it. You'll probably get your yes votes for the other ones, but I'm a no.
A no on the sidewalk?
I'm a no on a waiver.
No, because, can we clarify, can we clarify, do we have actual measurements that show that, like, has a definite deferment? Like, initially, I know that the footage, Dawn, how close are they?
You're talking the density?
How close is the density to be requiring sidewalks?
They actually do not. According to the subdivision ordinance, they don't have, right, they don't, they're not required to put into sidewalks. So it's like-
Yeah, but there's some question on the-
Acre.
Yeah, it was a wording even. Let me look it up.
Yeah, we sure.
I think Dawn and I both looked that in and, right, engineer-
There's so many per acre.
It's, it's just, I don't remember the number.
Do you know what it is? I have it in paper. Yes.
It's just under the threshold for sidewalk.
It is. The original plan was required sidewalks.
Right, I got it.
The number of housing down, it brought the, yeah, the density up, which did not make it required for sidewalks. And our comprehensive plan does say, since we're village, like, one side of the street, put sidewalks.
Okay. I got it.
So when they were, when you were before the board in August, you didn't have any sidewalks?
Yeah, right.
And it was a request is, since we asked you for the waivers, a request to add that in.
Jack had mentioned it and I followed up on it, to be clear.
I was not in favor of the sidewalks if we want to lay it all out there.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I just wanted to clarify because he said I mentioned it initially. I did not.
Dan?
I did.
Karen said residential division, subdivisions, which is a density of less than one dwelling per acre, the local street shall consist of at least, and it says no curb or sidewalk. And there's 13 houses, right, 13.
So-
One dwelling unit per acre.
I just wanted to clarify before we, on this, where we're at.
Jenna, we don't have a motion right now on 406N, do we?
I have, Jack's the first, you as a second.
Okay, now we're having discussion. Okay. Do I have any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. And any opposed?
No.
So that's a yes, you're opposed.
I'm opposed.
Okay. Moving on to 407C. The use of cul-de-sac streets is strongly discouraged. We're looking for, you are looking for a waiver for this.
Yes. First, the previous one.
Yes. Do I have a motion for this?
Sub moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Any opposed? Now, moving on to 4.25, we are looking at, help me out on this one. Proposed structures and earth disturbance setbacks.
Yeah, there's a list of setbacks, 100 feet for wetlands, for structures, 25 feet for earth disturbance, similar flood plain, consulates and detention basins. Instead of, we were discussing horizontal setback, we're talking about a vertical elevation separation of two feet when we're within essentially 50 feet or a certain distance of the uses listed on the application. So we're going to vertical separation to eliminate the flooding potential for the structures.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to grant that.
Do I have a second?
This is the one that I was asking for, assigned document that will be delivered to the homeowner acknowledging that fact so that when all comes and the basement floods, that-
That's where the condition and the declaration of covenants comes in. Yeah.
Are you okay adding that to your motion?
So I was seconded if you're okay with it. If not-
Yes, add that to the last one, yeah.
Okay. So I have a first and a second. Do I have any questions? All, oh, sorry.
Language that Patrick would prepare for the applicant to include A on the plan to be reported and B in the deeds to be conveyed, at least to the original owners. We can't necessarily control what gets conveyed to subsequent buyers, but-
No, but at that point, it would be on the deed, or on the plan, correct?
On the plan. And I would also include that on the deed to be conveyed to the initial-
What I'm talking about is not necessarily put in the deed, but it would be a declaration of covenants that would be reported against each property-
Correct.
-that has the suggested setback.
And, and then, but I, I believe in seven times seven ways. So if we can even require that to be in reference to that in the deed to be conveyed, and whether or not I go and pull that declaration of covenants and read it and say, oh, I understand. That's on me as the future owner. But the more we can get that notice out there, the better for everyone, I believe.
Patrick, do you have any issues with that?
No.
Are you okay adding that section?
Yeah, I made my motion to-
Can you restate the motion? Because I'm-
I make a motion to grant the waiver, conditional on-
Declaration of covenance.
Declaration of covenance being recorded on the deed.
And on the plan.
And on the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Questions? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Oh, you are an aye. Okay. What else do we have?
I had one more waiver that we may need, we may not. It was a discussion, I believe, with R2. We have currently on the plan along Lindell Drive, we have two feet of widening and curving. Just a discussion to make sure you've wanted that because it'll be Lindell Drive. You'll have a bump out for the couple hundred feet from the property and then bump back in. So we have it shown in the plan, just mentioning it. If you wouldn't want it, ask for a waiver and remove it. If you think it's acceptable for the bump out, the plan's stay exactly how it is.
I say good try, keep it in.
Actually, your engineer brought it up. I was just bringing up.
We're looking here.
Yeah. So it's right here. We have a bump out here along the curve and then bump back in. So if you're good with it, no more discussion on it.
I'll fall back to my same old statement. I think, I think it's reasonable to believe that some of this stuff may end up widening someday. And, and these, with this much development, you know, provides a little bit of snow removal, plow unloading, you know, that these people aren't, this isn't getting pushed out and this gets carried down to that. I've had people beat on my windows, plowing snow. So it was like-
So you don't think this will be pushed off on this person's property?
What's that?
The snow, if it's pushed back. I'm not understanding your snow.
They'll follow the edge of the pavement here. The snow will be pushed into the widening.
We don't give it a place for this to unload when they're coming down through. And maybe they'll push this back, but it would be on this.
Right.
So now this person's going to get all this snow?
Uh, some of it would unload in the widening.
On the street. Gotcha.
There's no sidewalk on that side. So it'll unload here first before it goes across.
I'm fine with it.
When that homeowner buys it, they'll see the sidewalk.
I just have a hard time believing that we're going to, at some point, take away from these houses that are already-
Well, maybe not from here, but from here down.
And put sidewalk or widening. But we'll let that for another supervisor at another time, I guess. Bill, are you of the same mind to leave the widening? Okay. We're going to leave the widening. If it is on there, you didn't ask for-
It's there. We don't, we don't have to, not asking for anything with this.
Will I ever have to see this again?
Yes.
You never know. All right. Anything else?
The waivers, the next thing is a request for a conditional approval based on satisfying the remaining two comments. I can go through any comments that are on here that you have questions about. Going through the first comment after the waivers is about foot candles. That is, I think, based on the height. Have a photometric plan, the whole deal. It's just a matter of the lighting contractor, I believe, trying to balance the whole height and the maximum.
Are you seriously bringing up street lights?
So I-
So, but it's on the comments, right? So we just have to approve-
So it's-
As long as you address approval.
Address the comments.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
I just need clarification because you already gave a conditional approval letter. The one comment regarding sidewalks.
We're done with sidewalks now.
The plan has it on one side, right?
Right.
Am I reading the sidewalk? So is everyone's opinion that it's not required on both sides for this particular plan?
It wasn't required at all.
Okay. So I just want to make clear, so that on page-
That note doesn't-
That note doesn't necessarily apply with the understanding that you are proposing it on one side.
One side will refer to R2.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to, you're back. Lindell Drive sewer planning module approval. We need that yet, right? Do I have a motion to approve that?
What are we doing?
Merely a formality, correct?
Sewer planning module approval. Yes.
Motion approved.
A second.
All right. Any questions on that? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Carriage Park Phase Three. Jenna, will you help me out with what we're talking about with carriage parks? Because I don't have anything from-
We are still kind of taking education of those roads over in carriage park. We had discussion with DeSantis or Triple Crown. We have the letter of credit. I think we have that squared away now.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There was a copy of that in your folder. There was mention to a lease in there that Patrick has now gone to them and kind of cleaned up the language for that.
It's still in draft form?
Yes.
Because it hasn't been provided formally, final version yet because there's still, the one thing that you were kicking around before we accepted the motion was the title search and/or title insurance. And I think you got a quote-
I did.
For the search itself to be 300 and change.
350.
Okay.
And the insurance, I think, depends upon how much you take it out.
She, the person I spoke with said that it would be presented with the assessed value of the property. So you would have to get the property appraised. So that could be a lengthy process.
When we do, when we do, when you, when you do the roads, I think I put in emails, you just do the minute, we don't even go through the hassle of assessing property.
That's just in the open.
The minimum amount that you can get title insurance for, and I think it's like, I think, I think 10,000. I think. When I was writing email that day, I think that's what popped in my head. So I don't know what that would be for whoever you get your title insurance from. But for something like the roads, we would just suggest, just get the minimum if you're going to go with the title insurance drop. At the very least, I think you want to do title search. So at least we can look at it and if something pops up that's questionable.
Side.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I agree with that.
And the one, the one thing, you know, there has been calls for this to DeSantis and DeSantis, and the roads have been completed. So based upon, you know, our back and forth last year, regardless of when we formally accept dedication, record the resolution of dedication for the roads, we're going to be maintaining it this winter. You're going to be, the D W guys, they're going to be planning this winter. Last winter was more of an issue for us to be concerned with because the top coat wasn't there and they were still, but now it's done. So it's, it's, just so everyone's aware, regardless of when we formally record the deeds of dedication for these roads and the acceptance resolutions, the township's going to be maintaining the storm removal, the snow removal.
So then should we wait till the title search is complete? What do you recommend?
I think tonight, I think you got to give Jenna direction as to whether or not she can spend the money on the title search, number one. And number two, I guess maybe wait until then to see if you want to do title insurance. I mean, that's ultimately up to you.
I'd make a motion, we proceed with the title search and based on the outcome of that, we determine if we have title insurance or not.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All right. I'm flipping this over. South Indian Territory Township Police slash Lawn Ambulance M O U for E M R. Mutual agreement of understand, memo of understand, I can never-
Memorandum of understand.
Thank you. It's something. It's a formal agreement between the two. So we are looking at getting something written up for that, Patrick. We talked about it, I think, at the last, was that the workshop or one of the last meetings? I don't know if it was the workshop or, were you here?
No.
No, Patrick, you were here last-
I was here when-
They accepted money for it.
Right.
For training.
And I did get a copy of the memo. I'm looking at it tonight for the first time.
Okay.
If this is the, if you want to consider, I'd like someone opportunity to look through it and think about it. But that's all.
Yes. I think our goal tonight is, is to have a motion for you to review it and have it ready for us at the next regular meeting for approval.
Or at least have my comments circulated by then.
Yes. Comments circulated and then we can discuss it and get it moving forward. Do I have a motion for Patrick to do that?
Sub moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? Ron, you're here for all this time. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I was writing a speech to send to Jack. I was going to leave and go get something to eat. But I could read my speech. I just type.
Sure. If you would like to share with us, that would be great.
Do you want to start with what the, like, I talk to officers Zimmerman a lot, he's EMT. So I'll just read, I'll just read this and then, wherever it goes, it goes. It is an easy decision for law EMS to 100% support teaming up with South Indian Territory Township Police concerning first responder EMS care to those who call 911. I will be happy to hire onboard any of our local officers as volunteers so they can become proficient with our ambulances and our operations. They will be free to come and go as they please with no mandated hours. Officer Zimmerman is a veteran EMT and he often beats our ambulances to the scenes of our calls. His ability to assess, treat, and ultimately transfer patient care to our crew is priceless and has a huge- and has a huge impact on patient outcome. Additionally, the other officers with less or no medical training are also a huge asset due to their presence and any help that they can offer us on scene. We are already teammates with all of our officers and have a fantastic relationship. And we already work and interact with them on a daily basis. Equipping them and training them due to the fact that they beat us on scene a lot of times will be a huge asset to the township. On the contrary, I fully understand they are police officers first. As long as they can exercise good judgment and common sense without compromising their duties as police officers, this is a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with that, by the way, I just as a comment. And I think, uh, the good thing, I think, you know, we're looking at it, but I think, uh, you know, the good thing is, is people willing to work together. And I, you know, it's, it's nice to see us trying to figure this out.
I think last night's incidents were a prime example of how badly we all needed one another.
I heard you guys had some rough calls last evening.
Just, just the scenes we have that we don't know what the outcome's going to be, or we maybe were like, wow, I wish it would have upgraded and got heated here. If they're already coming, again, assuming they're not on traffic stops, I don't expect to be on traffic stop or running speed and, oh, there's an E M S call, I gotta take off. They have to do their, you know, that's up to you guys and how you work that out, but. Even the most basic calls can turn non-basic. And it's nice to have the officers on scene and next guy's mean dog around, so it's nice having him around. But yeah, it's just nice having their, their presence on all of our scenes. Again, assuming they don't compromise their police. And that's where you have to draw the line with what they can and can't do and when. But, I mean, I love having him on all our scenes, they're, they're awesome, have a note.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions concerned? All right, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Thank you, go get something to eat before your next call. All right, moving on to professional service, R F P approvals. We asked Jenna to get a list together and also to work on getting something written up because the pension for professional services and investment management administration pension plans is a little more in-depth and in detail. So we have those before us. Yes, I thought you were going to say something. And then we also have the list of all the professional services we contract. And I guess we just need to decide what ones we want to send out for R F Ps. So I'm looking at, I have these two. Is the pensions, I have one shorter. Am I missing something here, request for proposals for pension professional services? And then there's a more extensive one here.
Well, I had a, uh, I was at the meeting, and I guess you got to talk about this, but she reached out to see if I had some kind of a form that we've used before for a pension professional service R F P. So what I sent her, I kind of click it a little bit for South Indian Territory, but there are going to be some things you're going to have to fill in with respect to the amount in your funds, whether or not this is across the board, is it for all of your employees, is it for non-uniform, is it for uniform? And, you know, there are certain, there's committees sometimes that are reference. So some things we'll have to go through and get a little bit more specific for your South Indian Territory. I haven't really been that involved in your pension, uh, plan, so a lot of this is form, but some of it needs to be a little bit more, uh, specific. But what it is, is just in the event that you send out an R F P via ad, it's a, just a form potential ad and then the actual R F P that kind of sets forth the services you're looking for.
I think we clear, right, Patrick, for services, we're not required to do this.
No.
Yeah, we're not, I, I think I want to be clear.
It's a professional service, you're not just bidding it out.
We're not, yeah, we're not required to do this at all. I think, uh, I think it's good that, you know, we look at these on occasion to do it.
Actually, with professional services, if, you know, I put a potential ad together, but if you, sometimes municipalities have like a, like a list of potential firms or, or entities or whatever that you know of, and you just let them know, hey, we're interested, uh, send us a proposal. Sometimes it's like, it's as informal as that is on occasion.
That's how we did our insurance.
So this came up because we were working on our budget and there were several questions as to when was the last time we checked and made sure we're getting the best, um, services. So. What would be, do either of you have a suggestion on how we want to go through or what?
I think it's never bad to get pricing on things. So while I said we don't have to, I'm not advocating that we don't. I'm saying that, just so folks know out there, like, we're doing something different than normally is, is done at the local government level. And I think it's a good practice. Although I love everybody here that provides a professional service, so we'll be clear.
We didn't talk about it specifically because you guys weren't at the last meeting, that was not the intention.
We did not discuss it, yes.
Okay, well, as far as the investment management and pension plans, I know we talked about we wanted to do that, for sure, correct?
I would agree.
Okay, so do we? What's the best way to go through that, Patrick? Is it something we need to research as far as?
No, I think Jenna, uh, can probably reach out to, or she might have the information over here, just like, you see, you know, there's a blank for active members, member retirees, the amount of money and assets, just to give them an idea, and then whether or not it is going to be something, maybe do or don't have a committee, I'm not sure.
That was something that our, um, the pension advisor review now.
R J Hall?
Yes, thank you. Mentioned that we should have a committee, a pension committee, we do not have one. But it's a, he said it kind of takes.
So I have something in here referencing a pension advisory committee. Not knowing whether or not you have one or not. It's, the language I ended up including here is kind of general and vague because I didn't know if you had one, if you have one, you might want to get a little bit more specific, but, I mean, this does the job. There are some additional blanks I got. And then also, is this for all of your, does R J Hall do all of your employees?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be both uniform and non-uniform.
So we would need to set up a committee?
Well, for this.
Not for that.
Actually, no, you know what, for this, if you don't have one, for this, I, for purposes of immediacy, if you're going to send this out, I would just get rid of the reference to the committee. And then after, after you go through this exercise or this process, then if the committee, if you want to form one, then I would start the steps in creating and implementing a committee. But if you don't have one now, it might take, I'm suspecting you want to send this out so you can maybe have some candidates for the first of the year to consider, right?
Yes.
So forming a committee, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how long that would take. Might be quick and smooth and even, it could be a couple month process, so. If you don't have one, I can ease, if you're sure we don't have one, I'll just, we can remove all the references to that committee.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a long answer.
That was a good answer.
The meeting's September twenty third, no, I'm just kidding.
What about, what about the zoning hearing board solicitor?
Were we done with this, though? Does that answer these questions in here? Are you able to fill out what blanks there are?
I'll just need from the board tonight what I'm to go out for our lease with, yes.
Okay, so definitely this. Am I right?
Yes.
We were all in agreements, you want me to make a motion?
I'll make a list.
Make a list and make a motion at the end, okay. Yep, so we'll just start, do you want to start here, the accountant?
Sure, I mean, we might as well go.
Jack, are you in favor of putting the accountant on the list?
I would say, let me think, it's nineteen years.
Yeah.
We just, um.
I mean, I know we got a quote, but, but we only got a quote because they solicited us.
Right.
Someone left that firm and then gave us a quote.
Yep.
Okay. Zoning hearing board? Attorney, solicitor, how long?
The here, well, the zoning hearing board solicitor, it's actually pretty interesting.
Do they have to do it themselves?
The zoning hearing board, well, it's funny, the zoning hearing board appoints a solicitor, but you approve their rate.
Okay.
You, you for the budget, so if, if they approve a zoning hearing board solicitor that is above what you're going to approve as their rate, that's, you know, that, it kind of sometimes has a potential, it always works out, I mean, it does, but. So the zoning hearing board appoints a solicitor, but you're in charge, your, your, your ability is to be able to agree to the rate.
So that's not on, on our list and our reword?
Shouldn't be.
I don't know that it is.
Okay.
Might be, it could just be.
I don't think it, I can't right now, I don't think it is though.
Okay. All right. Pension advisor, that's what we just did. I'm skipping over ones that I prefer not to. Just stop me if.
Right.
Insurance, we did just do, correct? Phone, we're still in a contract. The rest of these, I don't see that we're going to get a better rate on this page. Health care workman's grant, depositories, South Indian.
Yeah, what about, what about depositories? I, I had, had some people that are local approach me about that.
Depositories, we use Clickit, isn't that one of the cheapest way for government to get?
Um, actually Fulton Conference is a better rate right now, we do have one account with Clickit. And that's just because the state, I don't know, recommends or a soft recommendation that you have a Clickit account for, um.
CoStar stuff? Oh.
But we don't have to use them, right?
We don't have to use them, but they are a depository, they did offer a better interest rate at one point in time, but Fulton has far exceeded anything in the area. I know the municipal authority does, um, shopping around, I think Jones Town had maybe a higher C D rate, but we don't have any.
Did you want to put depositories on there?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think at least, I mean, I'm not sure, if Fulton offers a better rate than.
No, it's a municipal rate, it's not the same rate that you guys.
Right, a municipal rate, but if they offer a better municipal rate, why, like, why not?
Well, then if it's coming from the state, money coming from the state that's going in there, right.
Just in the one Clickit account?
Just the one account, yes, right. And we can translate at any time, we don't have to keep that open.
I mean, I'm.
Are you shopping, you saying you want to shop against Fulton, too, you want to just?
Yeah, I think I do.
I just want to make sure that there's.
Yeah, I think I do, yeah, because why not? I mean, there's other local institutions here, too, that.
Connie, yes?
I'm backing up, um, we mentioned something about the insurance, who's that?
Right now, it's with Bowman's. Okay, flip to the next page, unless there was something else either of you saw. Some on top is payroll.
Uh, diesel and gas, as I noted, are on CoStar, so you're already.
Getting the lowest rate possible for that, yes. Okay, so do we have anything else?
Where are we?
Up top, payroll, just going down this list.
Okay. I mean, I'm assuming.
They lock us into about twenty years.
Oh, wait, who?
Payroll is paytime.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it looks like we've sent, we've gone out to other two companies and they're not.
Right.
We're looking at.
Accounting permitting software?
Well, we're looking, were you at the budget meeting? You were not at the budget meeting, so we're looking at different stuff for that.
For that, okay. Security is just the camera system, right?
Yes, but we have a contract with Knight Security right now, is that correct, Jenna?
I'm not sure.
For simply for the maintenance or?
Well, they run our camera system.
That you guys?
That's, I don't know about a contract, but they have installed everything, they're, um, they did all the, the software instructions, so.
So you guys are using that, that's a fairly new system, right?
There's another option.
Yeah, got it.
Just to change systems. To go back to your appointment question with the zoning hearing board, it is on the list of appointments.
Thought maybe it was, I remember seeing this name, but.
Now, we have a zoning hearing board coming up in November, is it something that they can get us for?
Well, what's, what's the, I think we should at least look at the rate. Just to see what.
Well, we can look at that at budget time.
Yeah.
But we can put it on the agenda and saying.
Put the zoning hearing?
Yeah, if you're saying it's up to the zoning hearing board to decide who their solicitor is.
They haven't exercised in that right all these years.
They haven't.
If it's not broke, don't. But the N P C, it's, it's clear that the zoning hearing board.
Right.
But it's, it's, it always lines up because you guys have to approve it.
Right.
All right, well, we have our next budget meeting on the twenty third, so we can look at that, too.
Okay, so for our pension plan, accountant, am I?
Depositories?
Or no?
No, we can't.
But depositories.
Okay.
And yeah, I think Comcast is the only, right? It's the only option.
The only thing we can get.
Have right now?
I tried to get, they would not come across the screen.
And, uh, I'd like to do the last one, I, I think I'd like to see code enforcement.
Okay, so where we've already done the back was all CoStars, gas and diesel. Jenna, would you read the list then of what we have one more time?
Pension plan, accountant, depositories, code enforcement.
Do I have a motion to send out R F Ps for those?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Moving on to twenty twenty meeting schedule. Jenna created this, I looked over it, I'm hoping we didn't miss anything.
I did my normal thing where I get a blank calendar and put them all on there. The only thing I did note was the fire board to their meetings had to move and then the, um, board of supervisors, the one with the asterisk for the workshop meetings. That actually fell, the fourth Wednesday was actually the very next week somehow on our other schedule. So I bumped them to the following, so it was two weeks per week between the two.
I have a sort of related question, but not to the calendar.
Okay.
It, it's about the recommission.
Okay.
Can we, like, we appoint someone in the library, can we appoint, like, does it have to be supervisor?
To the, to go and attend those meetings? I believe that's per their bylaws.
I have the intergovernmental agreement that I can look up to see.
I think we can appoint so many, like, per.
Well, we have to look at that.
I'd have to look at the governmental agreement, so he.
Yeah, can we, can we look at? Sorry, it's just reminding me.
Are you saying you don't want to sit on that board?
I'm saying I, I love it and all, but, you know, but I, I think some people that are directly involved that are from the township might be better suited.
Interesting. Okay, will you look that up for us, Jenna?
Sorry, thank you, sorry, I apologize, that just reminded me of, I've been meaning to ask that question.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this calendar?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to part-time police secretary advertisement approval. We need to fill that position, so do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions? Yes, Doc? We have one secretary that will be leaving. All those in favor? Aye, do I need to put the rate out there or anything for you to, not to be hired? Okay. We are now on employee pay increase approval. And this needs to be public?
Yes, we need increase in pay. Needs to be provided for. I know the auditor, when I had a conversation with her, she said it had to be in the minutes.
For twenty twenty?
Nope.
No, employee that had a review. New employee, ninety day review.
Oh, yeah.
So we did a review of a new employee and we did a pay increase, and I should state that, is that correct? A fifty cent pay increase?
Per hour.
Per hour. Do I need to have a motion for any of that? Okay, sorry, I'm late. Do I have a second? Any questions on that? Yes?
And that would be standard practice now, the 90-day review?
Okay.
I, for, for new employees. That would be my, my vote when that...
When we do employee manual and when we're offered. I guess we could probably put it in employee manual now.
I guess could, but I, I can't see, I can't envision a scenario where we wouldn't want to, so...
Did I motion second? All those in favor? Aye.
I think in general, I mean, just, that's kinda standard business practice, but also generally start them out lower than you normally would because you wanna see how they do.
Right.
So, it's not, I don't think they get an advantage. I think you generally go, yeah.
I was just curious, because like I said, I had court during previous minutes and hadn't seen how it happened.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it did till now.
I still think Sean got hired at some point with a, a pay increase after a certain amount of days, yeah.
I, I meant to learn.
Gotcha. Okay. So NPDES closeout documents, Campbelltown Park and Township Building. Who wants to walk through that?
Uh, the Conservation District stopped by and said we have to close out our FGA permits.
Okay, that's how this came about.
So I just, we have the documents. Patrick put together the standard stormwater facility maintenance monitoring agreements or declarations for both. I don't think they both made it in here, but they're both there. And I just need to have the board approve, the chairwoman to sign the documents, so I can get those off to, I need to go.
Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
And any questions?
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
I was first, then the second.
Thank you.
Okay. Special event requests came from the Sticks and Biscuits 5K Run from Palmyra Ice Hockey Club. Do I have a motion to approve this? Chief, I don't see your signature on here, but do you have any...
No.
Concerns?
They've been doing it for many years.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Sorry, I forgot to ask questions. All right. Old business. It was Jack and Bill.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm distracting you.
That's all right.
We discussed this, right?
We did this, correct? South Lundy Township Police EMR discussion?
Yes.
Okay. That's all right. Well, it was old, new, back on, back off. Okay. DCED study discussion. So this was brought up at the last VOS, the workshop meeting, and it was not a free, I'll put that in quotes, 'cause it's still coming from somewhere, but... Do either of you want to proceed?
I was not really impressed per se or...
What the study was going to be?
Yeah.
It's kinda like a fire study.
15,000 over 10.
Subject to whoever's writing it.
So at this point, do we wanna take it off the table? Do I have a motion to, I don't know, do we even need a motion?
We don't need any.
I revert it down to DCED. We cannot reach out to PSTATs.
We can do that.
Yeah, maybe we can look at PSTATs, see what they...
That's a good idea. All right, so we'll move on and look at PSTATs for that. Township non-union employee pension plan, new hires. So this is looking at doing a, to, diva, no, defined contribution instead of a defined benefit.
Or non, yeah.
Do you have this together, Patrick?
Well, I forwarded, I got an email from RJ Hall.
Correct.
I think I forwarded it right out to the board. It might have been, is it yesterday, Friday?
It was recent, recent.
So in response to that, actually, it's two amendments. One is to go for new hires of non-uniformed employees, new hires from January 1, 2021, would be a defined contribution plan. Existing employees would still be on the defined, defined...
Benefit plan.
Benefit plan. But there's also the amendment to the definition of earnings and compensation, and I believe my recollection is the intent there is to ensure that we're doing it the way, that the plan is the way that the township is doing it. That's my understanding is the amendment to that definition.
That's what I remember.
In response to getting this email, I did send a response to RJ Hall. I'm pretty sure I copied you on it.
Yes.
Asking, I mean, it's, it's two-part. You're gonna have, for the new employees now, you're gonna have two non-uniformed employee pension plans. So my suggestion or request or comment to them was, one, shouldn't this plan now be called basically the non-uniformed employee's defined benefit plan? And then there will have to be another ordinance, you know, implementing a different, a non-uniformed employee's defined contribution plan. And I haven't heard back yet. I just, I, I, it's been a while since I've been involved in one of these, but I'm pretty sure that's the way it's gonna fall out. But I'm waiting to hear back from them on confirmation, because what's gonna happen is, so this is the amendment to the existing plan, and I think the title's gonna get played with a little bit. And when this isn't a form, this amendment isn't a form for, to be approved, it'll be approved by ordinance. And I don't know quite at that point yet. You can authorize us to continue going down this path, if this is something that the board wants. And if you do that, just, I don't think you need a, a motion, just consensus tonight to allow us to continue going down this path. And then when we're in a place where I have the ordinance ready with the final plan, it'll be before you for authorizing it to be advertised for a public hearing at some point in time. And also, I will need, there should be, the codifications of living the animal is still going on, but I will, it would be great if it was codified, but it's not. I will need the actual ordinance that did adopt this original pension plan, because in my, I already kinda put together a form ordinance, and I refer back to ordinance number blank.
Oh, yeah.
Because you gotta refer back to whatever you adopted at that point in time, and I don't have that yet either.
Okay.
But I guess, again, long answer, short outcome, just if you're okay with, if this is something you want, you know, just you have to authorize us to proceed, and then at some point in time, you'll get the ordinance in the final plan.
I think we did authorize you to proceed, right? So you just need to continue proceeding.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
And the amendment is the second part of that, is that something that we can, do we still need to do by ordinance? Is that... To me, there's two, no, no. What we currently, is it two different things or is it one and the same?
No, no, they're two different. One, we're looking to go define contribution to define benefit, but then the other is to re-establish what we're calling gross income or what we're reporting as gross income on.
But they can be, they can be part of the same, it'll be one amendment to the plan, just two separate...
Okay, but you're waiting on that previous ordinance number? Is that what I'm hearing?
And also something back from, confirmation from...
I really think the need, to be clear, if you're gonna have another pension plan for non-uniformed employees, you should clarify the title and the words.
All right, thank you.
Is this something we can have approved for advertisement at the workshop meeting? This has to be done before December, before the end of this year?
Yeah, I suspect when they get back to me with those answers and I see the original ordinance, I can, it's not gonna take me long to put it together, and I'll circulate it, but if you authorize it to be advertised with these changes specifically, you can advertise, and we'll have the public hearing on this one pretty quick. The new one for new hires, that might be, I don't know how long it'll take RJ Hall to get that together.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm assuming they don't, because he made a, one of his references in his email. I think he acknowledged that there's gonna have to be now a new plan for the defined contribution, but I will, if, if they had it, I think he would have attached it to that email.
Okay, so the general consensus is keep moving forward and get the amendment sooner rather than later, if we can. Okay, so moving on to Lingle Avenue update.
I have a meeting scheduled with Penn Dot in November, I wanna say, to go over its Palmyra, North Lundy area. I sent a email to the board. R2 is going to be attending, 'cause I'm not very comfortable with where the emails that I've been receiving versus the information that we have been given in the very beginning of this project. So I just kinda wanted to get everybody in the same room together to get an understanding of what is going to happen with this resurfacing that's supposed to take place from Cherry, I don't know, Cherry Avenue?
Street.
Cherry Street in Palmyra down to Palmyra Road, Lingle. So I just wanted to kinda give an update as to where that's at and what's being included, what, you know. We're trying to nail it down as far as what's going on with our MS4 program. I spoke with Kara, and she said that she was at a meeting for DEP, and they said absolutely that if you're in an intergovernmental agreement with Penn Dot and your municipality, that you both get 100% of the credits for the MS4 project. That's why I need to know what MS4 components are staying in their new plan, so I would, if you are at all possible to make that meeting, I would make sure that you are able to attend that.
I have hours that day. I can be there for like a half an hour, but that's all I got.
Yeah, it's in Harrisburg, so...
Oh, well, then I can't be there at all.
I tried to get it here, but he was like, can we just do it? I'm like, I don't care where we're meeting at this point, I just need to make sure we're getting together in a room.
Okay.
Did you send that to Frank?
I did, and he had responded that somebody from their office would, or maybe it was Mike, said that they would, they were already applying and attending for Palmyra.
Yeah, you sent it to Mike and Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Pat?
Will the STU money that comes up to this area for 2020 and every year, will that be used for that project?
We are banking all of the next few years, and that's going towards that project, yes.
Yeah, 'cause we hate to see it disappear like...
Yeah, it's a tricky animal. You, you know, if you're getting it, sometimes you have to do a match, so it's not, but this just happened to be that they were doing the project anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, the state, the state can do the match, and they use that money, so...
Yep. Okay, we don't have anything on the fire study that I'm aware of?
I don't, no.
Okay. I have one more question, and going, kinda going back, the RFP, you put that, where do you advertise that at? Or where do you advertise that?
Um, I would put it on Penn Live.
Okay.
It'll be on our website, and if there's any companies that you're looking to invite, I can make sure they're on the list or receive notification of that.
All right. Do I have anything for Good and Welfare? Yes, Jane?
Do you have any update on the riparian buffer trees from the Mariner East fines, $90,000? I mean, we're, I, I think you were supposed to meet and, you know, go over what, where they, the trees are gonna be planted and when and...
Yeah, that, we, our MS4 items took way too long, so we weren't able to incorporate that in that same meeting. But I just heard from Kara, because we have to do a quarterly report to, I'm just trying to look it up right now, we have to do a quarterly report to DEP for the grant, 'cause that's who the grant is going, who goes through, actually, but she said that she's going to be working, I cannot get this to load here. She said she's going to be working on, I can't get, the riparian buffer, what's getting planted where. There's also a sewer easement that goes through there, so it'll be different. We don't wanna plant trees in that easement, so it'll be more of a wildflower type of thing that'll get planted in that area, or some kind of native item.
And can you get some kind of training for the people that do the lawn cutting? And if you're gonna have meadows and native areas so that the staff knows how to maintain them and sort of their, like, mow once a year, instead of whenever they, they decide to do it? Because on wood lawn, it looks like they cut down all the cattails and stuff, you know, wet hair.
We have to cut those out. They're not supposed to be in our stormwater plan, and also on the other side of the lawn there, your house where the pump station is, those are not allowed to grow in that stormwater area at all.
Well, what about the, the thing that says natural area? What's that supposed to be?
Same thing, there's a, there's a drain that goes there from the other side of the road, and then it goes to the creek on the other side, so it's two paths. But that is supposed to be clear of any type of, and the cattails are...
Even the place that's not wetland? I mean, there's someplace that there's just grass, and I thought it was supposed to be a natural area planted with native plants.
That actually was, that's not a meadow. It's not a planted area. That's just left the way it is. It was just, yeah, it's just...
Whatever.
Whatever is right.
Okay.
So we actually, I actually scheduled something, or am going to be scheduled, I talked to Highway, and I talked to Public Works Director about having Kara go out and showing them exactly how they're supposed to be maintaining these natural areas. So that is in the works, and then also some of the MS4 things that you'll start seeing, instead of them just weed whacking around. Now they're required to pick up the trimmings that they don't go in the creek, so there are new requirements that we just discussed. When Jack was, I think at the meeting, we discussed some of the MS4 requirements that are coming up, so, yeah, those are in the works.
Anything else for Good and Welfare? Yes?
I have a question. Is there something wrong with the township ordinances? Or does this parade of developers just try to save money? I mean, I've been coming a couple years, and the past couple months, it's been like a parade of, we don't wanna do this, and can we change this? You know, is it them, is it us, is it a combination of both?
It happens everywhere all the time.
But if you're asking me, does a developer wanna save money? Yeah, general developer wants to save money.
Absolutely, but I think we also have a zoning ordinance that is not quite working in several areas, which is why...
Hence all the zoning hearing boards that are, that their waivers are granted. If the zoning, if the zoning ordinance was proper, you wouldn't have 20 zoning hearings a year, and every one of them is granted.
Which is also why we're looking at all the ordinances, and they're going to the planning commission for review.
It just seems like it's picked up in the past few months.
Well, we also are enforcing the zoning ordinance that we have, that in my opinion wasn't enforced exactly how it should have been previously. So...
With that one on Lindell, I mean, initially you said that it needed to have two paths for entry and exit, and now they're just letting, letting him have like one, and it's gonna have a big impact on Long Road.
Yes.
It, either way, it was gonna go on Long Road.
But the second exit doesn't have to be not on, it would have been on Long Road.
Except, yeah, gone out to Long Road.
I mean, if they, if they went over to Barnwell, they were probably gonna drop on the long.
They had several plans, one had to, two under Long.
Barn, yeah, Barnwell would have been shorter. They could have also gone to Forge, which we already have issues with left turn singles there, so it doesn't, I mean...
And it's just gonna be more traffic and no light there at Long Road.
I, yeah, and that's pretty much what happens when you have development.
And then there's, you know, the issues with flood planes, and you have to put this in the deed so the person knows that he's buying a house on a flood plain?
Yes, because unfortunately...
Their house, their, their house isn't in the flood plain. You may not like the answer, but the house is not in the flood plain.
But it's...
And they're going to know when they moved in, just like you knew when you moved into your house, that you have wetlands, you know, 50 feet off your back door.
I don't have wetlands 50 feet off my door.
You should, you should look out your back window sometime when it rains.
Well, that's in the development.
Oh, that, that water wasn't there until the development?
No.
Oh, wow.
Okay, anything else for Good and Welfare? All right.
I think the development across the road created all the stuff that's on that side. Because there were houses along, schoolhouse that never flooded until the...
Do you have storm, do you have stormwater management facilities on your property?
We're gonna end the meeting. Our next supervisor workshop is October 23rd, which we all heard previously. We'll be discussing the budget and also the one plan to do with the dome. We will also then have a supervisor meeting November 12th. Do I have a meeting to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all. You keep coming to the really long meetings.